Hello, everyone. It is a little after 7:00 p.m. I'm very sorry for the delay in coming back from executive session, but we are reconvening from executive session. And I'd like to welcome everyone back to our Hingham School Committee meeting of March 13th. We have a number of guests here, which is lovely to see. I'm just going to read a quick statement about the remote option being offered just as we're coming back in to open session. This meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair, that's me, at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all other participants of said recording. Harbor Media is recording. We are also recording on Zoom. And we do have two school committee members participating remotely tonight, Carrie Nie and Matt Cosman.
Hello, excuse me?
Yep.
Can you hear, the Zoom is muted, so we can't hear what's going on in the room.
Oh, all right. That's not good. How about now?
Thank you.
Can you hear us now? Let me have to read this text.
Does it sound like the owl?
Switch it, switch the audio to the owl.
Switch the audio to the owl.
We can, we can hear you now. It was just the Zoom that muted.
Okay. Did you, sorry, Carrie, were you able to hear the remote participation piece?
No, no.
Oh, sorry. Got to read that again. Okay, so any lawyers in the room? All right, and I know there are. One of them might be on the Zoom. All right. This meeting is being offered remotely as an alternative means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We are recording on Zoom. Harbor Media is here recording for us. And is there anyone else in the room or on Zoom recording? All right, seeing none. We will come back into open session. And our very first thing on the agenda is our very first school showcase from the Foster Elementary School. We are so happy to see so many people here tonight. Thank you. Want to take us?
Yes, so we're excited to have the Foster as our inaugural student school showcase. And we hope to have one of these every school committee coming up through June. An opportunity for our students and our faculty and schools to shine and share something that they're really proud of, that they'd like to share with both the school committee and the wider community. And so we're glad to welcome Foster Finest to the room. And I think they have some high school buddies as well who accompanied them today. So let them steal the show.
Yes. Welcome, thank you.
So, hi, everyone. My name is Erin McGrath. For those who don't know me, I teach first grade at Foster. This is my 18th year there. I have Mrs. Basu, Charlotte Basu, with me tonight. She's been teaching first grade with me for six years now. And back in 2018, we decided we wanted to start a kindness club. We had always done lots of kind things at Foster, such as collecting food for the food pantry, collecting items for the veterans. But I always sort of felt like the kids didn't really make a connection to where those things were going and what was happening with them. They would come in and say, "My mom said to give you this," you know, it was a can from their cabinet at home. So we wanted to do some real hands-on activities with them so that they could spread some kindness in our community. So this is the fifth year of our club. So we also brought along some of our fifth graders with us tonight, too, because they were in our original kindness club. And so they're going to talk about their experience. And we have done, over the years, lots of in-school projects, but then during COVID, we switched to some at-home projects. We did over Zoom. And we've been, this year, we've done kind of a little hybrid of both. We've done some in-school projects and some at-home projects where we have involved the whole school in the at-home projects. But Mrs. Basu is going to talk to you a little bit about the projects that we've done this year and some of the projects we've done in the past.
So as you can see, there's kind of a list of a ton of different projects that we've done. And, you know, we've done some that are really Hingham-based or kind of South Shore-based or at the, kind of, our first big project was decorating paper bags because there's a guy who often will do bag lunches. So we thought, you know, let's just put some positive messages. And he's always looking for bags. So, you know, that's a simple thing that first graders are great at. They're great at decorating. They're great at being positive. And then I think one of my favorite projects that we got to do, this is a couple of years ago, the kids made their own coloring books for the children at South Shore Hospital. And it was so great watching because I was a little nervous. I was like, you know, are they really going to get doing outlines and not coloring it themselves? But the books that they came up with was fantastic, you know? And then we melted down, Mrs. McGrath took half the group and I kind of worked on the coloring books. And Mrs. McGrath took half the kids. They melted down like all these crayons that we had, because you know those crayons that are only an inch or two long, you know, that kids don't really like to use? We melted them into fun shapes and brought those along and packaged. So the kids had so much fun in, you know, making superheroes for kids to color in or all these different things. And you really got to see their personalities shine. And then our last project that we did just last week, a lot of you guys know Opry. She is our kind of community dog across all the schools. And it's actually her birthday month, so she's turning two. So we decided to partner with the Sichewa Animal Shelter. And we collected a bunch of things that they needed, like paper towels, trash bags, along with kind of other goods that they really needed along. And then the kids during the club, everyone, I think, was here for that, they made dog toys and cat toys out of different types of fleece. And we packed them all up. And luckily, we got some awesome family members to deliver them. And they were just so thankful. And so we kind of got to pair that with Opry. And she came by today and over the last week. And she got to take a picture with the kids. And she even got one of her own toys for her birthday. So it was just a great experience, kind of being able to bridge it across all the grades as well as all the schools, especially Opry, who, you know, first graders love seeing her when she shows up. So now we're going to hear from some of our first grade friends, our fifth grade friends, and then as well as our high school partners. So if you want to go to the next slide. First graders, do we want to start with you guys? Ellie, you want to start?
Hi.
Do you want to, does she want to come up to the table? Do you want to come up here? A little closer to the mic.
Hi, my name's Ellen Naffey. I'm in first grade at Foster School. My favorite kindness club project was making dog toys for the animal shelter. I love coming to kindness club.
Sherry.
Can we stop screen sharing? Sure, the people at home want to see. Just thinking.
We just pulled the chair out.
Do we move the mic a little?
Go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, my name, hi, I'm Audrey Juscall, a first grader at Foster. My favorite kindness club project was making a hot chocolate mug with a hot chocolate packet to give to a friend in my class. I look forward to kindness club every month.
My name is Louis McCourt, and I am a first grader at Foster Elementary. My favorite kindness club project was making dog toys for the shelter because I love dogs and have one at home. I really like being at a part of kindness club.
Next, we have some fifth graders who are part of our original first kindness club.
Hi, my name's Logan Kelka. I'm a fifth grader at Foster School. I loved making Annie's kindness blankets when I was in first grade. When I saw the opportunity to help with kindness club again, I want to be in it again so I can help spread kindness and be a role model for the younger kids.
Hi, I'm Sophia Naffey. I'm in fifth grade at Foster School. I was in the first kindness club, and we were invited to the State House to be recognized for spreading kindness in our community. I wanted to help this year because I thought it would be fun to be a part of helping my little sister Ella spread kindness.
Hi, my name is Louise Mahoney. I'm a fifth grader at Foster. I was in first grade when kindness club first started. My favorite project was making blankets for Annie's kindness blankets. I wanted to help kindness club this year because I remember how fun it was to spread kindness when I was in first grade, and I really wanted to share that with others.
And we also have some high school students here to share. Every month, they come and help us. Since we started kindness club, we've had high school students who have come to help us. And it just kind of happened by chance that Mrs. Basu and I had a curriculum committee meeting at the high school when we first started kindness club. And we walked in and we saw this sign hanging on the wall looking for students for their kindness club. And so we just, we took a picture of it and we emailed, you know, the contact on it and said, "Hey, we just started a kindness club. Would love to do a little project with you guys." And then they've come every month since then. So they've been awesome role models for our, for our first graders. So we're really happy that they were able to join us tonight.
Hello, my name is Samantha Harris. I'm a senior and the president of Hingham Service Club, which many people might know as Spreading Acts of Kindness. Our collaborations with Foster have been amazing opportunity to introduce community service values in younger generations and show that giving back can be fun and promising. By introducing these activities at a young age, the kids are able to understand what community service means to those who it supports and potentially build a future in which they will want to participate in these activities for the rest of their lives. My hope in these collaborations is to build a future in which most, if not all, high school students want to participate in community service activities beyond college requirements and National Honor Society.
Hi, my name is Mia Filardi. I'm a senior at Hingham High School, and I've been part of the Hingham Service Club since freshman year. And a huge draw for me was the collaboration with the kindness club. And through it, not only have I gotten to become better friends with other high schoolers, but also making connections with elementary school students and just learning from them, from their passion, their confidence, and their overwhelming kindness. And I think it's an amazing opportunity that I'm very glad I've gotten to take advantage of.
Hi, I'm Nora Andrews, and I'm the vice president at Hingham Service Club. I joined the club my freshman year, and unfortunately, it was the height of COVID. But what really drew me to service club was how we were still so involved and everyone was still taking action even in such a tumultuous period. I know our work with Foster's kindness club has been like a cornerstone of our, of our club since its inception. And our work with this younger generation, we continue to strive to cultivate a more inclusive environment, both within our school system and in our broader community. Thank you.
And then we, just last, we have just a little slideshow of pictures to show you some of the things that we've worked on through the year. And you'll hear some singing in the background of this little slideshow. And that would be all of our first graders that our amazing Mr. Lewis recorded them singing this kindness song that we sing at the beginning of every kindness club that we have.
(Singing) Kindness, kindness, oh, wherever you try this, you'll see the world's a better place. Kindness, kindness, oh, wherever you try this, you'll see the world's a better place. It doesn't make bombs, and it doesn't make wrong. You can try it anytime, you can play it any way. You can do it in your heart, you can have everyone. Kindness, kindness, oh, wherever you try this, you'll see the world's a better place. Kindness, kindness, oh, wherever you try this, you'll see the world's a better place. It doesn't make bombs, and it doesn't make wrong. You can try it anytime, you can play it any way. You can do it in your heart, you can have everyone. Kindness, kindness, oh, wherever you try this, you'll see the world's a better place. Kindness, kindness, oh, wherever you try this, you'll see the world's a better place.
Thank you so much. There's not always a ton of reasons to smile being on the school committee. So this was really a treat to hear and see you folks and see some future Foster Finest maybe in the back row there. We really, I really appreciate it. It's such, I mean, it's so nice to see the younger kids and the first graders, fifth graders, high school students. It really is so nice to see how it sort of progresses through the times. And I'm so psyched to see and not at all surprised to see Ms. Basu here. She was, at one time, very, very kind to my son Ethan, and he still remembers her so fondly, way before she was a teacher. You might have been in high school yourself at that time, if she was in high school. So she was spreading kindness all those years ago herself. So thank you so much all for being here. It was really a pleasure to have you. Thank you.
You did wonderful.
Yeah, you really did. And of course, you're welcome to stay to hear the rest of it. But I fully understand if you have better things to do. It might be bedtime.
Well, and I do, if I can just say, like, I remember the first time I spoke at a school committee meeting before I was on it, and I was really nervous about doing it. So I just want to comment how brave everyone was who got up in front of everyone in the whole town and spoke. You did such a wonderful job. So I hope you're all really proud of yourselves.
Thank you so much. Sherry, sorry, the chat is on? Is it, we're just asking about the sound?
Yeah, I tried to turn on the setting.
Okay, all right. Is it? I'm sorry. I think initially they couldn't, but they're good now. We had, it was, I think it was on.
Hi, Jacqueline.
Give a song? I think, but I think we're good. All right. Do we have to do all the rest? I know. Permanent smile on my face. Maybe we'll just keep smiling through everything. Look forward to the next one, the next school committee.
We might have different points, have to break for the song.
Thank you for breaking. I know we talked about it, so it's very nice. It's a nice reminder of all the good work that our faculty is doing and why the kids are all here. All right, so we'll go to the business stuff. So we've got a bunch of minutes to approve. I'll just let you run with it.
Yep, just go on a roll. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on February 27, 2023.
I'll second. Any questions? Yep. Jen, was this the one? Sorry, I'm just looking quickly. One quick typo that I sent to you, yes. It said human. Yes, you just wanted to make sure that the Arts Alliance had a scholarship for Hingham Seniors, not Human Seniors. Though humans are one. Thank you.
We don't want to limit it.
Okay, we can make that change. All right, anything else? All right, Matt or Carrie, anything?
Nope.
All right. I'm going to do, roll, I have to do a roll call because we've got members online. So Carrie?
Hi.
Did you, sorry. Okay. Thank you. Matt?
Hi.
Thank you. Ellie?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. All right.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting with the advisory committee held on March 2, 2023.
I'll second. Any notes? No? All right, any discussion? All right. Carrie?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Ellie?
Hi.
Tim?
Abstained, just because I wasn't here for that one.
Okay. Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee, school committee meeting held on March 9, 2023.
I'll second. Any questions? Any discussion?
Just, I was actually on that meeting remotely.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, yes. Thank you. Sorry about that, Carrie.
No, no problem.
So many. I know. All right, all those in favor? Carrie?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Ellie?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
I'm an I as well.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee joint meeting with the select board held on March 9, 2023.
I'll second. Any recommendation or any questions or comments on those? Carrie?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Ellie?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
I'm an I as well.
And then the last one, 5.5, we never called to order, so.
Okay, perfect. All right, great, thank you. All right, number six on the agenda is questions and comments. Before I read the whole thing, we only have one person in person. If anyone has any questions or comments for the committee about items not on tonight's agenda? See nothing in the audience. How about anybody online raising their hand? All right, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So in your packet was an update from the South Shore Collaborative and from the board meeting. They are beginning to have discussions around FY '24 budget. They are also finding the FY '23 year challenging. They currently have, and this is how it has an impact on us, they currently have several openings, about 15 positions, many of them para positions, but also teaching positions. They have a waiting list of 16 students. So they have space and room to take more students, and they have a waiting list of 16 students, but are unable to take on additional students because they don't have enough staff, which impacts school districts because school districts then have to look for other settings, more costly settings, out-of-district placements than South Shore Collaborative. So they are sort of struck, that has impacted their financial standing in FY '23. And you see some, some financial information from them there. Are there any questions about that? We wanted to just give you a little bit of a budget update. You want to pull it up, Sherry? The first one was just an update on the financial forecasts from the town. I think most of the school committee would have seen that at one of the many advisory or select board meetings. But we'll just ask that you should have just talked us through it just briefly, especially the community. In terms of this new forecast? Sorry. Have to go back a bit. Oops. What happened? Yeah. I'm sure it's not there. Okay. So for this forecast here, it's an update from the last one that we've seen, where our number is now down to 6,015,000 as a town as a whole. Some of the main changes to this forecast were with regards to state aid. The amount budgeted was, actually came in lower than what was anticipated. So there was a reduction downward for this, for state aid and Chapter 78 as well. In terms of the excess overlay here, there was a vote that was cast for that one. And, but the biggest change that actually took place, that changed the budget, was with regards to health insurance, which came in a little bit lower than what was anticipated. This brought us down to the 6 million number. And from here, our share as a school committee of that, of that 6 million is 3.9 million right now. So that's where we are, which gives us a little bit more wiggle room in terms of reducing the reductions that we already put in place. Okay? So we were previously at 6.2, now we're at 6,15,000, and it brings us down to 3.9 million in terms of the shortfall. Okay, so that works in our favor. Just to kind of walk you through where we are in the process right now. Right now, the, the school committee and the select board have voted on a budget of And this is our level service budget and also includes some of our unmet needs as well. Some of those unmet needs include moving technology out of capital and into operating, our operating budget, getting a nurse coordinator, increasing professional development up to 200,000, and further reducing the full day kindergarten from 800,000, $800 to 500. One of the next areas that we will actually be working on today, within the school committee meeting tonight, is an MOU between the municipal and school committee and municipal government, municipal select board, advisory and, and school board, where we will agree to a 3.5% increase in budgets for the next four years. So far, the advisory committee has already voted in that particular MOU. There are some changes to the MOU from what was first reviewed last week. So we'll have to determine whether we consider today a first read, or if the changes are not substantial, are very little and, or very little, and you can just approve the MOU tonight. If you can't approve it tonight, then we'll probably need to schedule another meeting for either Wednesday or Thursday of this week. Because the plan will be for the select board to vote on the MOU on Thursday this week and for the advisory to also vote on the budgets this week as well. So as I mentioned, the advisory will be voting on the balance budget and override budget on Thursday, March 16. And once that happens, or hopefully, once that happens, the next thing that we'll be looking forward to will be town meeting on April 24th and a ballot vote on April 29th. And that's it? And the last thing I had was some information about Medco. Medco is holding its advocacy day on Tuesday, March 21st, at the State House. It's an opportunity for members of the Medco community to meet with legislators and as a community to advocate for the program and inform state legislators about the funding needs of the program as well as continuation of the program statewide. So I provided some information, and I know some members of the school committee are hoping to attend as well on that day. So we're excited to have a team being, be able to attend on March 21st. And that's it?
Great, thank you. Any questions, Dr. Adams? Carrie or Matt?
Nope, it sounds good.
Not number nine, yep.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Communications? I have none. Do you have none?
Hello, I'm doing well. I only have a few things today. Student advisory is going to have a meeting tomorrow morning, if you think that's advisable. But... But, um, the, um, we're going to discuss student outreach for the budget override process. That's the plan, try and talk about stuff that we can do to help build turnout, get students to come and get them to bring their families. So that's, that's the goal there. Other thing...
By the way, I forgot what you were doing there.
Yeah, the student body would also like to submit its support of a cancellation tomorrow.
Well, there's not cooperating.
I wish it was not cooperating a little bit more. But, um, should probably schedule a joint meeting soon is another thing I just wanted to bring up.
Yes, thank you.
So I will probably reach out to the advisory committee on, student advisory committee, make that clear to people on dates about that, and try and figure out when that could work, and then I'll send it to you to see if that works, if that's the better way, unless you want to send me dates.
No, that would be great if you don't mind. That would be great, thank you.
And then the final thing I wanted to highlight was just that the Drama Club won their first round of the festival, so they're moving on to their semifinals, which is going to be March 18th in Norwood, but they are going to be doing a free presentation, once again, of their show, The Caucasian Chalk Circle, this Thursday, March 16th, at 5:30 PM in the high school auditorium, and it's going to be free, so if anybody's interested in that. Actually helped out a little bit on the show, I helped with, um, Lilian Andre and Santa Pazzano, um, we helped write the music for the bridge, so some of that audio was recorded in my basement.
Yeah.
All the actors are really great in it, so I think it'd be a fun thing to do for that. So it's a free performance.
Yeah, no, it's great.
I'd like that.
It's hard to get, it's hard to move forward to the next round, so that's, that's amazing.
They did a great job.
Yeah.
Which is a brack joke for a very select few people in the audience.
Brackean epic.
No, that's great, it's original, right?
Uh, no, it's, uh, it's a...
It's the music?
It's, uh, brack.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, play.
Got it, okay.
It's not a one act, but you have to make it into a one act, so, so the musical component kind of skips some of the...
Got it, okay.
...level plot.
Yes.
That, that component can be a little bit confusing if you don't understand.
Yeah. Very clever. Thank you. Um, any communications from the committee? Carrie or Matt?
No.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, all right, um, so unfinished business is to review the memorandum of understanding for fiscal year '24 override framework and fiscal year '24 through '28 financial management plan, um, and potentially act as appropriate. This is the second read, but as Ayesha mentioned, there were some changes made to this document. Is what we have in our packet the updated one, or?
Yes.
This is the updated one, okay.
It's, it's dated 3/13, and we made copies that are redlined, if that's helpful for those in the row. So it's the one that's dated 3/13, because there's two of them now in there?
Yep.
There's one from 3/9, and now there's 3/13.
Okay. Sorry, Carrie and Matt, you do not get a handout copy because you're on the Zoom. I think, from what I understood, and only because I had a very brief conversation with Dr. Adams, and even briefer one with George Dana, the advisory chair, was that there's just a couple of things, and maybe one of them is really just a clarification of the 2% for the special education.
Right, so in terms of that, one of them is just spelling out the advisory committee's policy on, financial policy for the town. I, I think if you had a meeting last week, you'd have, one of the, an old, um, select board member had suggested kind of spelling that out, and it's kind of rememorated here, kind of just discussing that, what the policy, about referring, referring, referring to the policy rather, sorry. And there were some, um, clarifications right before that. And, um, another area that has changed a little bit was in terms of, um, describing the 2% and how that's, that calculation works. And if you look towards the end of the document, it has been, there has been added a chart that includes, um, the, the total amount of the, um, the budgets, and there is a reduction of the 2% growth in special education, just showing how that growth works as well over time, that the 2% is not part of the 3.5%. Well, it is part of the 3.5%, but it's, um, any increase over that is separate. Yep, by referencing the, 1D in that area right there.
Okay, which is how we discussed the other day?
Exactly.
That it was going to be, but this just clarifies it.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I think that, actually, the change that they landed on, um, at the end of the D was probably more in line with what we had discussed last week, there are just many iterations a bit in between, but I think, um, in terms of that, it should be pretty similar to what we, that we discussed before.
Okay. Yeah?
Why, can you just explain to me the, why you decided to change Appendix A, "will be considered," change it from distinct, from separate to distinct? It's in bullet D, it's in the 2% paragraph, it's one of the seconds, the first sentence.
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
Which page?
I'm sorry. Page three. D.
Oh, yep.
First sentence.
Got it, yep.
Third line, as outlined in Appendix A, will be considered as a, you say, separate and change it to distinct category.
Remember, these were suggestions suggested by the select board, so we're not aware of why they made those changes, we can just interpret what it means.
If you want to as well, we can get them to, to call in, because they, they did say that Michelle or Tom would, Mr., would, would actually call in if we needed them. So, um, if, if that's an area of clarification, we can definitely get them to call in now, if you'd like.
I think I can understand the difference between separate and distinct, because it's not really a separate, it's not a standalone bucket.
It's still, it's still in our budget.
Right.
Yep.
It's still in the, okay.
So I guess I'm thinking more like separate is on its own.
On its own, and I'm being inclusive.
And distinct is sort of, I had the word, different. Like it's a distinct, different category, but not separate.
If you look at the notes on the document, Michelle Monseñor Montegar made the change, so knowing who makes the change sometimes can give you a little context.
And then I have one other question.
Okay.
So it says, same paragraph, it's in blue, for the 2%, so they wrote fixed annual growth rate. They're just spelling out the FAGR, correct?
Yeah.
Or was, are they adding in?
No, it's just an abbreviation.
Yeah, so the fixed annual growth is the FAGR.
Okay.
And they're just, instead of just saying a 2%, they're just saying that that 2% kind of defining it as being a fixed growth rate of 2%. So I'm hoping that that's, yes, that's the intent here. I think that's the intent here.
Yeah, I think they were just trying to clarify 2%.
At a fixed.
Yes.
At a fixed.
Oh, yeah, okay.
A fixed growth rate.
Mm-hmm.
Not compound, fixed.
Exactly. I guess that makes sense, don't put that definition of the financial policy.
Michelle, is there a legal definition of what is a substantial change, or is it just the feelings of our boards?
I think it's really the feelings of the boards. We talked about whether or not we wanted to get very specific and sort of define economic instability, but we wanted to keep it a little broader, that we could all, we'd all need to come back to the table to discuss it.
Yeah.
So on the top of page five, it does give a little bit of explanation. I'm not sure if that's what you mean, Tim.
No, I was asked, I was asking if the, the changes in this, would count as a second reading or a first reading?
Oh, yes, so sorry.
That's what I was getting at, I'm sorry.
I thought you were talking about the, um, potential things. I, I think it's a second read, because I don't think there's anything, there are no, like, new categories really that were incorporated here, there was just more clarification around the out of district expenses. Maybe the adding in of the financial policy, but I also, that's just a definition, it's not really something to, we're not negotiating that.
Right.
It is a policy that's already in place.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's the one question I have, so it, it talks about the town will maintain unassigned fund balance in compliance with the town's financial policy, so I was concerned at first because it's, because we're saying, we're specifically saying that, but we're not actually identifying all of the financial policies that we have to make sure that we follow, and we always have to follow the town's financial policy, but then I notice in the other, this is on page four.
Yeah.
So on the other commitments, we do note several times that we are going to follow, um, the financial policy of the town, so the town will continue to fund capital outlay during the five-year period, the town will continue to make annual contributions to its OPEB. The unassigned fund balance is going to be in compliance with the town's financial policy, and then the last bullet point on that page, um, the town will use its best efforts to maintain its AAA bond rating, um, consistent with the town's financial policy. So when, when I had heard about the unassigned fund balance being added in there, I was concerned because it's, if we're so specific, uh, I'm, I worry that if we're not specific enough on everything that might have an impact on the financial policy, that somebody could come back and say, well, you were specific about this one, but you weren't specific about another policy, so does that mean that you're not considering that as part of this plan? And so I, I guess I, I want to consult with the lawyer maybe that is listening online, but I, I guess if the town is, um, you know, the other departments are considering this to be part of this and that it doesn't put us in jeopardy in the future, then, um, I guess I'll follow the lead.
Yeah. I'm not a lawyer, but Carrie, I think we're, we're talking about you. I sort of looked at, it seems superfluous to have this in here, because nothing in this MOU says we're not going to follow the town's policy, but I also felt, I, it didn't, in reading through it, with the inclusion, I'm like, I don't think it hurts us, it doesn't, I don't really know that it adds anything, but I don't think it detracts anything either. Carrie, did you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, I appreciated the clarification, honestly, like, I think it's, I think it's fine, I appreciated all those changes. I did have a note on, um, one of the other things though.
Yeah.
On H5, under the fiscal year '24 override fail, the first bullet, um, the school and municipal departments will implement service reductions as of July 1st, 2023. Specific actions will be at the discretion of the town administrator and school superintendent in accordance with the department's budgets approved at annual town meeting. Um, and I guess the only thing with that, we haven't talked about, I, I worry, I know it works a certain way on the town side, but given the school committee hasn't discussed a balanced budget yet, and we probably won't until after town meeting, um, I just wanted to make it clear that we're not giving up our rights to determine the cost centers and, um, and discuss the budget deliberately as we had planned to.
Yes, thank you, and sorry, you had, um, that was good, that is good feedback. So we probably should add this in here. Specific actions will be at the discretion of the town administrator, comma, school superintendent, and/or school committee?
Um, how about, and school superintendent at the direction of the school committee?
At the direction of, okay, yep.
Yes, yes, you go there, I'm already doing the thing. We just, we want to wrap and try to micromanage a budget or anything, but, um, we do need to talk about it.
Right, no, that is an excellent point, and because, like, we, um, often remind folks is that our budget is unique from the other town departments and that we do have discretion over how, um, expenses will be paid, so there is quite some, um, discretion that we have versus what, um, the other town departments may have. Okay. Or?
Yes.
Do you want to go, do you want to add that in?
I will ask the town administrator to make that change.
Okay.
It should be a small one.
Yep, and then, so we'll have to, add comment, need to revote, because they've already approved it as written, but, although they'll have to redo this anyway.
We do the changes.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, they have the changes.
They got the changes too.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Carrie might be able to answer this too, because I know she's looking into this. Carrie, on page four, at the very top, it talks about the special education reserve funds. It was changed from stabilization to reserve funds. That implies that we're following the regulations around that account, correct?
I think so, that's my understanding, but we need to check with Michelle, isn't it?
I think so.
Does Michelle want to hear if that changed?
Yes, the other Michelle. It's my Michelle.
Yeah, we want to make sure it's the correct name for, for the fund. I've always heard it called the reserve fund, but we may want to check.
Article six. I think it's, and it's also, I think your question, Jen, it's about the, to the extent possible.
To the extent possible.
So that, we'd, we'd have to use that fund to the extent that's possible via state law, and that particular revolving...
Yes.
The constraints of it.
Okay. Anything else? Do you have any other?
No, I'm sure.
Ayesha?
No.
Yeah?
No.
Goodness. Do folks want to, do you want another minute to keep reading, or do we want to, are people ready to vote on it? We have to insert to...
Right.
With that contingency, the, the clarification of...
Yep.
Reserve fund, and then, um, and then adding that one line about the, it is in... First, uh, page five, do you need that?
Yeah. I don't need it.
You got it, yeah.
Okay.
Carrie and Matt, are you, are you good, are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
You're good? Okay. Um, all right.
I'm going to attempt to make a motion.
Attempt to make a motion.
Okay, I am going to make a motion to enter into the memorandum of understanding dated March 13th, 2023, entitled FY24 Override Framework and FY24 to '28 Financial Management Plan, Subject to the Full Funding of the FY24 Budget, voted on by the School Committee on February 27th, 2023, of 65,703,985 dollars. And as such, authorize the Chair of the School Committee to execute said plan and authorize the Superintendent to manage the implementation of said plan on behalf of the School Committee in accordance with the terms.
Subject to?
Subject to the clarification of the reserve fund on page four, and subject to adding in the language on page five to read, "The school and municipal departments will implement service reductions as of July 1, 2023. Specific actions will be at the discretion of the town administrator and school superintendent, at the discretion of the school committee, in accordance with mass general law, in accordance with the budget, uh, in accordance with departmental budgets approved by annual town meeting 2023."
I think just...
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, except for discretion at the direction.
At the direction.
Of the starting.
Sorry, misread that, thank you.
Sorry, misread that. Thank you.
Is that good? Somebody want a second?
I'll second.
All right, Jen seconded.
I had to process that, sorry.
No, no, that's okay. Only when you're ready. Any further discussion? All right, we'll vote. Carrie?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. All right. That passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ayesha and Margaret for all the work on that. I know there's a lot of back and forth. I think it's good though. All right, new business. To review the '23-'24 school calendar and potentially act as appropriate. Sorry, I'm trying to find it. There it is, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
So the calendar is very similar to this year's. There was one change. You'll notice that the May early release is moved to September. The hope in doing that is that we can provide more professional development earlier on in the year. And this is really important in the implementation of a new reading program at the elementary grades, to be able to front load as much of that professional development as possible earlier on in the year. I think it also helps with some of the scheduling of lots of things that are going on in April and May around MCAS and trying to make those kind of calendars kind of work as well. But it's extreme, it's very similar to this year's.
Are we thinking of voting on this tonight?
Possibly, but the police chief and the town clerk wanted to discuss primary day, which I was thinking that this would be an off-election year because a presidential election is in November, but there's the primary in March. And the town clerk wanted to talk about that, about potentially adding that as a day that schools would be closed or, but we have.
I think that's a long process to make that change, so I don't, I don't. We could always update the calendar if we need to make a change and decide on whether that day is, if we decide to make that day a no-school day.
Can I ask a question about the hours? This, the calculation of the hours have been run through for the 180 days and the day-by-day and with the half-days and all of that?
Yep.
Now, there are more half-days than, or is it the same as this year?
The same as this year.
So you just no longer give a May half-day or something?
Yes. It was moved from May to September.
And what's the election day, Michelle? It's November?
It's March. It's, um.
March, probably March 5th. If it's the first Tuesday of March.
Is that Super Tuesday?
Yep.
March 5th.
I want to get this little thing here. Good Friday. And that is a holiday. Okay, I was just checking that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Feels kind of odd.
I know. It feels way early. I know. I was like, what? Do you want to put it on the agenda for the 27th? What do folks think? Are?
I like to, I like to wait one little more. I feel like we always have.
Another election?
I don't know when, last one, voted on the calendar at the first.
No, we usually do.
We usually get feedback too.
Yeah, we usually do, sort of, we do usually do two reads of the calendar.
Okay.
Just to get some feedback. And did the calendar committee meet? Okay, all right.
I asked for clarification on the March 5th date.
March 5th?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just if that was going to be a thing, would that just be for middle and high school where there's voting locations? Or would that be a district-wide day off?
That is what we'd have to figure out. Because it gets complicated with the number of days, the number of hours that the students are in. So then it, so if only two schools are closed and do they go later in the year? So it gets a little complicated, so we have to.
Putting our major school out, though, for that day would be very counterproductive if we're trying to encourage people to vote.
It's hard when you have siblings and, you know, so it's better if it's a middle school, everybody day, than it's just half and half. So it's, but it's, it's cleaner and easier to communicate.
And it becomes more expensive if we end up doing it, if we end up having middle school and high school as a day off and not the elementary because of bus drivers. So they would have one more day that they have to.
Contract.
Yeah.
Right. And then middle and high would go and act like elementary would get out earlier and then the, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's better everybody.
Parents can bring, bring the kids to vote with you.
It's so tough because it's that, it's the second week after February vacation. So they're back for a whole week. And then the following week, then they would have.
Once you're back for a whole week, vacation is long forgotten, though.
Tuesday, and then they would have a half-day on that Wednesday.
I think we can all agree March is like the sloggiest of the slogs, right? It's like.
You have the holidays, you have a holiday in January. February brave.
And it's like, March, there's nothing going on. No days off.
Especially since we're not voting on this. If there's, it doesn't look like we're going to have a policy about March 5th in two weeks anyway. So we'll just, we just vote on this calendar and if we have to change it, we'll change it to a later date.
I think it's your practice to do it over two meetings. I think you should do it over two meetings.
Yes, it doesn't sound like we'll have.
First view of it, so.
No, we would, yeah, we probably won't have a decision on the election day, but just something to be thinking about. And then maybe they can come and chat before. And then we can work with all the parties to figure out what we think about that day. And probably a good conversation to have now at least because even if we don't do it for this, to think about for the next calendar. Because there will be a much bigger election in November of '24.
And for anyone in the public who's wondering, the tentative first day would be?
Thank you.
September 6th.
Yep, tentative first.
5th.
September 5th.
September 5th.
For the 7th grades on 3/12.
Yes, with kindergarten starting the 7th.
Is the draft schedule going to be posted somewhere as a draft so that we can get feedback? Community feedback?
It's always part of the packet that we're posting online of the school committee packet, so we can post it tomorrow.
It's usually something that parents care a lot about, so making it easier for them to find might be, if it's not difficult, might be a good thing to do.
Yes. And so, and then with no snow days, June 13th? Yep. Why? No, not good. Sorry, Nathan.
What?
No, we were knocking wood that no snow days next year, but then he said, sorry, you won't care. You won't be here.
I know, I don't skip snow days this year. I don't get extra days for snow days, so I mean, I want as many as possible.
More snow days.
I'm hearing the same thing at home, Nathan.
I know, I know. All right, and then the makeup days, okay. So this calendar doesn't work out too badly, it sort of feels. Like sometimes you can go way deep into, into June even with snow days.
Very similar to this year.
Yeah, pretty similar to this year, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Ness, I mean, sorry, sorry. Carrie and Matt, did you have anything?
No, and Matt has jumped off.
Oh, we did jump off. All right, thank you. Okay, so we will take this up and probably vote at the next meeting on March 27th. All right, subcommittee and project reports. Carrie, do you want to go first?
Yeah, great, thank you. So the middle school council, our next meeting is on March 27th. And I would just note that we have nine meetings scheduled coming up for salary negotiations with, or in March, April, and May with even A, which is the teachers, and you know, B, which is the paraprofessionals, and we're continuing to work with them on developing successful contracts.
Thank you. Ally?
Thank you. PRS had a PTO meeting last week, which I attended just to give them a little bit of a budget update. And not surprisingly, they had a lot of good questions and just trying to encourage people to attend our meetings. As you can see, it worked really well tonight. Insert sarcasm there. But they also have a school council meeting coming up on the 28th. And I'm not sure I'll be attending that only because it conflicts with the special education task force, which also meets on the 28th. And we did have our first two meetings of the task force on the 15th of February, which feels like ages ago, and the first. And then we have two more coming up before we finalize things and pass them along. And I saw many of you at the arts party on Saturday night, which was a great event. It sounds like it was quite successful. So thank you for everyone who attended. And then Jen and I went to Read Across America at Self School. Was that last weekend? It feels like forever ago. Which was a great event. They had a really good turnout. They did a really nice job. We had some parents who came to talk to us with questions and some good feedback, which we'll pass along if it hasn't been shared already. And then finally, Climate Action Planning Committee will finally be coming to present the plan to us on the 27th.
Thank you.
Awesome. I have, we're doing the special education subcommittee meeting on April 5th at 4:30 at Town Hall. And just knowing the initial interviews for the executive director of student services are happening this week, so we may have finalists as early as maybe next week, although that's not a guarantee, I don't know. So the interviews go. But all the interviews are scheduled for this week.
Great, thank you.
I just have curiosity, who's the, do you guys have a student rep on that and who is it?
We.
For the?
We do have a student rep. We've had one meeting so far. I'm trying to remember. I don't remember who it was, though. Yeah, people have questions about the hiring process. It's Susan Tomato is running it. I can get you the name of the student rep.
Thank you, Tim. Tim?
I attended the Self PTO meeting last week, similar to what Ally did. We talked about the budget. There were a lot of questions from the parents regarding the budget and the overrides. Kind of tried to answer those questions the best I could. And then we also have a policy meeting coming up this Thursday, the 16th, at 10:00 a.m.
For finance, capital, and facilities, we have a subcommittee meeting Wednesday at 5:00. There are warrants in your packet. And then I attended a few different forecast meetings with Michelle as we work through that with the town.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. Hingham High School Council is meeting this Wednesday. School Building Committee Thursday. There's also World Culture Night at Hingham Middle School. I'm hoping to get there, but I feel like that might be a conflict. And Ness and I also had an opportunity to join Dr. Adams, Katie Roberts, and Ayesha and other superintendents at a breakfast that was hosted by Brockton Schools?
The Mass Association of School Superintendent.
Of School Superintendents, thank you. It was hosted by then, it was like legislative breakfast. It was held in the Brockton Professional Development Center. A whole center for professional development. And it was really great, though. It was nice to hear, well, it was not nice to hear, it was.
Comforting.
Comforting, I guess. I'm not sure of that word, but it, we are not in this alone. Like all of the districts were talking about the budget impacts on the 14% out-of-district increase to tuitions. The, just the cost of educating students, the Student Opportunity Act, while a great start in providing funding is, it's not enough. Many districts, including Hingham, are getting $30 per student. And the conversation was really with the legislators to remind them of how important funding was for the schools to get the Student Opportunity Act better funded. No one wants to take away from districts that are getting the right amount of money that they should be. So no one's saying, hey, take more from them to give to us. We need all the districts to be provided with better funding. There was conversations around talking to Governor Healy about her budget plans for the year. So it was really great information exchange. And the legislators really did seem to be listening, you know, not, not a, not a one of them was saying, no, we think the schools have enough, and no, we're not interested in funding more. So now we just have to figure out the ways to get the revenue into the public schools, pre-K through high school, not just into some of the places the governor is planning to put the fund. So it was, it was a great, a great event. I also had a great opportunity to meet and chat with Cindy Weeks Bradley, the district's equity consultant, and it was, she's amazing. Really doing some amazing work with the district and had a great meeting with her, so that was good. I think that's all I have. But thanks to the HAA, that was a great event, and really I heard it was very successful. So that will be good stuff for the Hingham music arts programs. Yes, Ayesha?
Just a couple of updates.
Yep.
Sorry.
No.
So the advisory just alerted me that the vote on the budget will be tomorrow and not on Thursday.
Okay.
And there's a public information session webinar that is being planned between the select boards and, I guess, school committee. April 11th from 6:30 to 9:30.
Yes, thank you. There are also some public service announcements being taped and going out that I think they're going to start going out this Wednesday and then sort of one each week about the override process, what it is, how we get here. So just short videos. Myself, Ness, and Jen are taping segments for them. And actually doing, Harbor Media is also doing a couple of public service announcements just around town government and what the different departments do, what the different committees do. So that's some good stuff coming from Harbor Media, too. But that's helpful to know. Yeah, I'd heard that AdCom was considering potentially voting tomorrow if they could. And then the select board is also meeting again.
I think they're meeting on Thursday.
On Thursday?
Yes, but that may change.
Yes.
Beginning of that, getting the information out once we know.
All right, thank you. All right. Anything else?
Yeah, sorry, Michelle.
Yes.
I'm, I'm really sorry to do this, I'm sorry to, to generally, or could we reopen the minutes of March 9th? Because I actually was absent, sure that one, I didn't access the Zoom.
Oh, right, right. You were there for the advisory committee.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
No.
I probably jumped on the later one, but not that one, so.
Right. So you were at the select board meeting, but not at the school committee meeting?
Not the school committee.
Okay.
Oh, right. Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yep, no.
We were all at the select board meeting. So I think we.
Well, let's, all right, just. Let's just go back and check because we, because there were two.
I switched the two. The one, the 5 o'clock versus the 6 o'clock. So you, she was, she was absent. That's what I had her amend.
Thinking future.
All right, sorry. No, no, that's all right. All right, so the meeting minutes from March 9th for the school committee, that one did say school committee members absent, Carrie knee. And then, oh, okay, got it. So it was, it was correct as early, but we amended it.
Oh, okay.
Yes, all right, so we will, we will reopen that and we will re-vote.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on March 9th, 2023.
As initially presented.
As initially presented, yes.
Thank you.
I will second.
All right, all those in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. All right, those are re-approved.
Thank you.
No, thank you for catching that. All right, if there is nothing else, I want to thank everybody for being on the Zoom and all our audience members that were here and still here, sticking with us. I think this has been a really, really, really long, unusually. I think this has been a really, really, really long, unusually long budget process. Typically, we would not still be talking about these things this late into March, so I want to thank everybody for sticking with us. All right, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All those in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
I'm an aye as well.
Thanks very much, everyone.